We'll call this work session Monday, April 15th. Order invocation given by Asher Johnson and the pledge allegiance by Alexis Burks.
Dear God, thank you for all day that you have given us. Please be with those who are sick. Please be with everyone who is here making plans for our city and please guide their decision-making. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing tonight, number one, Main Street, Scottsboro requests Ms. Crawford.
Good evening, everybody. So before I was hired in December, Main Street, the design committee had already had a project underway for a pocket park. So up until last week, we didn't have any designs for that that they had committed to. So in your packet, you will see the design layout for the pocket park as well as the cost. And then on the third sheet, you will see kind of the funding that we've already gone after to help reach our funding goals because the company does not want to get started until we have raised all the funds for it. So tonight, on behalf of Main Street of Scottsboro, we are just asking for at least help with the bathroom and the stage area, which is the 125,000 that you'll see on that front page. You know, anything more than that, obviously, we would be glad to accept as well, so.
You see in your package, the total cost for this park would be $397,500, but that is on the high end, correct?
Yes, yeah.
He put everything on the high end to cover that. Of course, we had talked in the past about doing bathrooms on the square, and this would be one way of taking care of that, at the same time helping with the pocket park. This would be in the parking lot the city owns between the bake shop and Safety First. This is the one time Main Street had called it Julie's Park.
Yes, in memory of her, yep.
In memory of Ms. Gentry, Ms. Gentry Michaels, so. And you're asking for part of the, what was the COVID money, what's it called? ARPA money is what you're asking for to cover this, so.
Yes, yes.
So anyone have any questions as far as the park and as far as the amount or anything like that?
It's 125,500 for the bathroom area, right?
Yes.
That would be the stage, bathroom, and storage area. As you see on the second page, you'll see the coverage stage, a bathroom, and a storage area, and that would be the cost for just that part of the park.
I think bathrooms would be good for first Monday.
Yes.
You know, Mr. Chairman, I think we need to all have a little bit more time to go over this. You know, this came up before, and I drug my feet on it due to the cost of the whole project.
And it's not getting any cheaper, is it?
No, no. It's more than I remember from when it was brought up during the budget time. The mayor and myself had a small conversation about this today, and I went over there, and if we do this, we are going to lose all that parking. And today, there were 23 cars parked in that spot. They'll have to go somewhere.
Yeah.
So a couple of things to consider.
Now, if I'm all right, it's only the frontal part. There still could be stuff behind it.
Yes, yeah, and then a gate to get from parking through the.
Yes. So it's not all the way to the street?
On the back, on the south side. It's not all the way to.
It's not all the way to Apple Tree.
Okay, where are the covered stage? Is that going to be on the north side or the south side?
It would be back towards Apple Tree, to the back part of it.
Okay.
Because you'll see the front, the arched entry, that would be at the square part.
Okay. So from where the bathrooms and the storage is, how much space behind it will be for park?
See, I don't know.
South looks like to me, that edge of the project, I think it lines up with Livingston's.
The building?
Uh huh, yes.
You see what I mean?
You'll see on the right side, you see that little cut where the building would be on that side. It doesn't go back as far as the building on the left side.
Okay.
Yeah, I see.
You'll see that little turn.
Like it'd come out straight from safety, back to Safety First that way?
Uh huh, yes.
You still at least have about maybe 10 parking spots, if that.
And I would guess that every one of those cars you saw were courthouse workers?
Well, I do know the DA people, they park over there, and the Mac can appraisal has about four vehicles that park over there every day, and I don't know who the other ones are.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming that the juvenile court has some people that park there.
Yes, I wouldn't doubt so.
But when, like, the probate office and map and moved to the DHR building, they moved that.
That's true. Thank you, Don.
I think they're gonna, I think it spoke for yet 40 cars around courthouse when that happened.
And it's in the works.
All right, anyone else have any questions or comments on this?
I'm interested to see where they can get to them running for this project.
They are still.
Google and Power and all that.
Yes, yep. I've been in contact with all of them, so hopefully so.
Well, during.
They're looking for grants, too.
Yeah.
Yes, I talked with Karen today, and she said that was open, and she was giving me that information.
Of course, they're not asking the city for the whole amount. They're asking what can the city put towards the bathroom stage area, so.
Would the bathroom be like heated and cooled? Do you remember that part?
I don't know if they touched on that during this.
Because in the wintertime, we'll have to look, be sure to have the plumbing, or it won't freeze.
Yeah.
Yes, and I talked to Jim Green, and they have said that they would donate all the supplies needed for the bathrooms.
Are Jim Green? Yes, sir, thank you, thank you.
Are there any plans for maintenance and repairs and vandalism and locking them up?
I was hoping that the REITCOM would take care of it and maintain it.
There you go, Don.
And lock.
As far as cleaning, but the bathrooms could also be done the same way the pickleball's done. They aren't a timer that lock at a certain time.
And they'd be open every day?
Huh?
They'd be open every day or just during functions?
I would think just during functions, but you could have them open during the day, regular day shift till 5:00 or something during regular weeks, but when you have a, it just depends. It could all be set up however you wanted. Anyone else have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Crawford, for following through with this.
I know there's going to be some more questions come up. I know, and so I don't want to put this on next week's meeting because I want to make sure you have enough time. So the next meeting after that will be May 13th. Yeah, May 13th. I'm gonna have to start bringing my readers. I hate that, but I'm going to. So we'll put that on May 13th meeting. That'll give the council time to, for any questions that come up during that time, you can reach out to Ms. Crawford, and we'll go from there.
Do we have money left in that fund?
Yes, and it needed to be designated already. Matter of fact, they've already asked.
It has to be committed by the end of the year.
Yes.
End of the year?
Yes. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number two, tourism grant application from Scottsboro Jackson County Rescue Squad. Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I normally would not represent them on this behalf, but if y'all remember correctly, last year, they were at the Walls of Jericho. Well, this year, they got a call about 2:00, and they're at the Walls of Jericho again, getting some more people out. Two of them have fallen and hurting theirselves, and so they're currently trying to get them out. I think you have in your packet a request, let me say a few things. This year, we spent a little time at Goose Pond, working, a young man lost his life down there duck hunting, and those boys spent several days down there dragging and looking. It is a well-needed thing in Jackson County. I can't imagine not having them to do the job that they do. They raised funds with this fishing tournament to help them pay for things like the drowning and what they're doing tonight. Anything y'all can do to help them would greatly be appreciated, as again, I'm a semi-retired member, trying to help them get some funds for this fishing tournament. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to ask. If you've never gone and looked at what all they have, I would encourage you to get a tour because there is a lot of equipment over there that they use on a regular basis to help the people of Jackson County and Scottsboro in their worst moment possible. And I would highly recommend that you get a look at it. They do a great job, they've got some good equipment, but it takes money to keep it up, and they raise this money and use it to maintain it all through the year. They don't get paid, they pay to be a member of the squad, so there's no pay to any of them. It actually costs us $25 to be a member, so I don't think you'll find a greater group that'll go out in the middle of the night on holidays, weekends, and even an Alabama football game, you know? So they've been out many, many times. I just want to brag on them, not because I'm a ex-retired, somewhat retired member, but they can do a wonderful job for our county, and anything y'all can do, I know y'all been trying to reduce amounts, but this is a well-deserved group.
Anyone have questions?
I don't have questions, but I too like to brag on them. My days at EMA, they helped me numerous times during tornadoes, snowstorms, hauling people to the hospital, and with no complaints, and I commend them.
They actually totaled a truck this last year in the snowstorm. One of them got hit, taking dialysis patients to the hospital or to the dialysis center because they still have to get dialysis during the snow, but one of them wrecked a truck this year, and they've had to replace it. So, you know, there's always a need for them, but just letting you know.
I feel that organization is, I don't know what the police department, fire department would do without them, but I can't even count on them to kind of come out and help us out with whatever problem we're having, but they deserve it, too.
Thank you. We'll put that on next week's meeting. All right, number three, discuss the resolution surplus fire department property. Chief Lee?
Counsel, I think you have a list in front of you. We have several pieces of old extrication equipment that we would like to either donate to volunteer department or put on gov deals. This is equipment that we no longer need. It's since been replaced with battery-powered extrication equipment, and we also have several old TVs and old generator that we'd like to discard that's no longer usable.
All right, you see your list in front of you. Anyone have any questions on this? No questions. We'll put that on next week's meeting. Thank you. Number four, discuss the resolution to award the bid for solid waste department. Mr. Labelle?
The bid that you're looking at here is a replacement truck. Insurance has paid that unfortunately had an incident at the landfill several months back and totaled a dump truck, and when the insurance money come in, we decided to put it out for bid for another used truck. Two bids that came in, one you're going to notice is really close to the amount of money that we did receive. The other one's a little bit more, but it's a totally different truck. Either way you so choose is going to help us. The latter one, of course, I think longevity of being in our system, it's probably worth that little extra money that it is just because of what kind of truck it is and the length of time that it'll last.
And that amount for the insurance was $52,461.24, so anything above that would be a budget amendment. So anyone else have any questions on this?
So you recommending the truck work?
I do, just because of the truck that it is, it's just a totally different truck than the O-Mac. One of them, I think, is an O-8, which is a really good truck.
O-6.
O-6.
How did you write your bids?
We wrote the bid specific, and they met the requirements.
But they're not the lowest bid that needs specification?
They're not the lowest bid.
The council is required under Alabama law to award bids to the lowest bidder who met specifications or to reject and then rebid.
Both of them met it. I said both of them met the bid. I looked at it, and they all answered every one of them, so we'll be fine with the other one. I just, with the money difference, I thought it may be something we could entertain, but.
Only if the council rejects and rebids and the bids come back that they're the lowest responsible bidder that meets specifications.
Absolutely.
All right, anyone else have any questions on this? Then we'll move this to next week's meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number five, discuss personnel for the recreation department. Mr. Wood?
So the position we're asking for is a full-time aquatics assistant. Y'all have given money in the past for that to be a seasonal summertime addition. We're seeing a increase in number of people wanting to do swim lessons, a number of people wanting to rent the facility for parties. I think when I moved here, we were about four weeks out. We've doubled that since then. They're about eight to 10 weeks out now for people wanting to do activities. Our current person in that position is due retirement in about two years. The certifications needed for that position, there's four certifications that would take roughly about a year to obtain, and so if either, if that person is not at work at the moment, I'm the only other person that can do those things, so I have been teaching some swim lessons and teaching classes, which I know there's a lot of other things that I need to be doing, but we're doing it to get by, and we would make that request for that position to be a regular full-time position. The numbers, I believe you have it, the low range for that position would be, starting May 1st through September 30th, would be $21,359. High range would be about $24,470, and then for, and then if it's something that you want to continue going into the next budget year, that's what we would ideally like to do.
Anyone have any questions about this position?
I just have a question. I didn't know, I was not aware that the REITCOM gave like, is that just like individual lessons, like one person?
So we do, right during the spring, February, March, and April, we do individual lessons. We do eight people a month, that's four lessons. In the summertime, we do group lessons, and those are a little less effective because there's two instructors and eight kids at one time doing it.
That's the only one I ever knew that gave.
And so that's what we do during the summertime because the need goes up, but we're just getting a lot more calls of people asking if we can do them, and we're just kind of at the limit to what we can do right now. So in the interest of trying to get more of our young people swimming, that's why we've brought this to try to, this would help us a lot, a full-time person could almost double what we're doing right now and then make it more efficient in the summertime.
Is the part-time position filled?
No, we tried to fill it twice, and it never, I think they tried it once right before I came on board, and then we tried it once that first summer and got no applications. We do have a current person lifeguarding for us who is an adult age, who would do, who could do that. I mean, we're not targeting that person specifically, but I would assume that person would apply, but even if they don't, then we would still reach out to get another, whoever the candidate would be.
Anyone else have any questions about the personnel? No questions, we'll put that on next week's meeting. And then number six, discuss the building maintenance for the REITCOM.
So the other thing on here, we have a panel that basically divides our fire panel that can break our building into sections in case there's a fire, so it can limit the damage done by a fire. It's required for us to have this up in our building. When I got here, they were, again, that's almost three years ago, there was pieces that needed to be replaced. We replaced those pieces, and over the last, every few months, we've had to replace something else, and so we reached out, we kind of stopped, we needed to reach out to a different supplier, a different technician, and these are the needs that we need to fix it. He has gotten it to stop excessively beeping all day long, which has been great because we couldn't disconnect it, so we've had to have people come in and try to help us get it turned off. But all the components are here in a proposal. I believe that you have a new motherboard. Basically, I think the whole, most of the whole thing needs to be replaced. It's a, and it's for $7,561.52.
You see.
You already got the PO for it, huh?
Well, we had a PO because it was only going to be about $2,000. We did get a PO for that, and then when he came in to inspect it, it was an older version that he was told that he got from the records, so there was a couple of other things that he needed to add to it. So this is a secondary quote from the first try.
So in your packet, you see the amount that it costs to repair this. You have any questions? Now, I've got $3,678.
No, sir.
Is that correct? Okay, here.
Do you have that? Do you have that?
No.
We don't have that.
That's why it's got the PO. No, but I can tell everybody that was the first one. That's why he said the PO. Yep, the total amount would be $7,561.52. You can just email it. No. So anyone else have any questions on that to repair that?
Can I ask Mr. Woods about the playground, where we're standing on the playground right now?
They had, they were intending on bringing it last week to set up with all the rain and weather. They asked if they could wait to start this week, so the equipment's started to be here tomorrow, and they need about a full week to get all of that equipment installed. That's the non-ADA piece. That one we ordered several weeks ago, and it will be here right, probably close to mid-May is what the timing is on that.
So we'll be ready for our kids getting out of.
Most of the playground will definitely be ready before then. Most likely, it'll be close to the time school gets out before the other piece is ready to be installed, but that's all I'm moving forward.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. President, I have something else, too. It's off the subject. Well, it's building maintenance, I guess.
Okay.
The parking lot at Bynum.
Yes, sir.
I see the fence got done and the curbing gutter, great job. I do have a concern, though, where the pavement is supposed to meet the curbing gutter.
Yes.
There's about a foot.
Right.
Well, my concern is, as we get hard rains this month, or any day, actually, I think because it's not sealed, it's going to render the curbing gutter unstable if water gets underneath it.
Okay.
The integrity of the footing and the post and all that would compromise.
Can I, can I follow up with you in a, after the fact, there was a reason he said he did it that way with the anticipation of doing the rest of the parking lot? He said it would be a much easier transition to leave that space there. It was a little more detailed than that, but I couldn't find that information.
Yeah, I understand that, but what I'm trying to say is we need to get it done as soon as possible before it compromises the curbing gutter.
Yes, sir.
And you're right back where you started.
I sent y'all a bunch of, some of the other things, I can add that to it and get that processed as soon as, as soon as another week.
I need, thank you.
Okay.
We're going to put the maintenance, the other part, on next week's meeting.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
About this company, about a little bit, it's about those nets and shades?
Yes.
Because I understood that they were already going to breathe them way ahead of where they are now. I mean, last year, we talked about it.
Right. So it was brought up several weeks ago. We.
We had brought it like a year ago.
Right, well, we brought you a proposal to our budget hearing meeting, and so that was not put on the list, so I just kind of let that go for the time being. So as soon as y'all brought it back up as an expedited thing, I've gotten it Thursday. The company in Arizona that designed the shades got an updated specifications back to me, and I've already gotten it out to the people that built the shades last time, so they're, we'll do a quote any day now from them.
Y'all got anything else? Thank you, Mr. Wood. Number seven, discuss airport property acquisition. Mayor, you going to go over that?
Sure, this is for two properties that the property owners have come to us about purchasing, and this would be for an appraisal and survey of both properties, which should be a total of, I think, $15,000 for both.
$15,000 for two different properties, okay. Anyone have any questions to Mayor on that? I know this is, we've been looking at a lot of different properties over there, but just seems like it's all fell in our lap at one time, some properties coming open, so we'll see what happens with that. So no questions, we'll move down to next week's meeting also. That'll conclude the meeting. There's no delegation, so we'll go to reports. Mayor?
A couple of updates. The question came up the other day on Willow Street about the old TG Collins store. I did get ahold of the property owner. Actually, I talked to him today, and had emailed a couple of times before. The property owner has just closed on it. He has a partner. The debris that was on the sidewalk, I think, was cleaned up yesterday. Their plan is to have the old roof off in the next couple of weeks and then start rebuilding it from there. So now that that's all settled, they should be moving with recovery of that. The other thing, I received a letter from Alabama Department of Transportation last Wednesday, and ALDOT is requesting to remove the signal at the intersection of Willow Street and Houston Street. Last week, I sent a letter back to ALDOT. I called and spoke with them. I spoke with them again twice today, and we need to sit down and see what our options may be, but they are, they cannot justify replacing the entire signal and equipment for an intersection that is not warranted by the state. Apparently, they did a survey, and that intersection meets none of the nine criteria for warranting a signal. So want to come up with a couple of options and get with council and see where we need to go. I'm opposed to that, to them removing that signal, but we need to come up with another option. That's all I've got, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Frederick?
I had people calling me and telling me that they saw that lumber was off of the sidewalk, and I think that's great news. It's good to hear. It looks better already with that lumber off the sidewalk, so that is good. I appreciate you checking on that, Mayor. And I just want to say, the Heritage Center had an art show this weekend. If you didn't get to go, you missed something. Hopefully, they'll have that, like, an annual event, but there were lots of people over there. The Heritage Center is a great facility, and I was just glad that it was being used. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Ashford?
Only thing, I, I just wanna say that I'm opposed and I'm taking that signal down.
Thank you.
At Willow Street, you know?
Thank you, ma'am.
And there was some talk about, uh, ALDOT making a people that's going south there. Only be able to make a right turn. And that, I just don't get it.
Well, uh, actually, in their letter, they say that, um, it would be a right turn only on the southbound traffic. So that is correct.
Now, I'm just, I'm not for that at all. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Oliver?
I'm gonna piggyback right on, um, Mr. Ashford about the, uh, light. I'm against that. Uh, we need that light there. And the next thing I'm gonna talk about is, if you didn't have a chance, I'm like Ms. Frederick, if you didn't have a chance to go out. I didn't get to go out to the Heritage Center, but I was able to get out to the ballgames this weekend. Our fields was full. I promise you, it was probably about fifteen hundred people here. That makes my heart joyful that we are using our fields. So, more games need to be played here and more people need to come in. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Daw?
Just on passive experience as a police chief, police officer, I, I don't agree with, uh, losing that signal either. However, it is a, it is a state intersection. And if they don't want it, then they, they won't pay for it, so we'll have to do it.
Yes.
And, uh, they maintain it from that point on.
Do you think if they are bent on that coming down, we could put our own up? Is that what you're saying?
Well, no, we, we would have to put one up to their specifications, pay for it.
Yeah, they would do it if we paid for it.
It, it would, it would be just like.
Maintain it after that.
It would be just like the intersections that we've just created at Publix and, and those. It would, it would be the same situation as those.
Okay.
I think there's a lot of potential for people to get hurt.
Yes.
It's interesting to me that, that light's been there at least sixty, if not seventy years on that, in that same place.
I don't understand that.
And what has changed?
Right.
Right.
Well, the change has been just like with the city that I mentioned in the letter that I sent back to them. The old Benham Mill has been there as long as any of us here remember. And there were no setbacks when that was Highway seventy-two coming through there and there was no side street setbacks. Well, there, that building's still there and it's all grandfathered. The signal's been there. So, I did point that out and, uh, they're willing to wait a couple of days until we can come up with a couple more options. But to Mr. Daw's point, I did ask about the cost. And we can look at that and, uh, it'd be similar to what we did at one of the other intersections, if that's the way we need to go.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Uh, remind everybody, next Monday will be a meeting. And then the twenty-ninth is a fifth Monday. We will not meet that night. Uh, and just a heads up for May, uh, of course, you got Memorial Day. So May sixth, work session, May thirteenth, meeting, and May twentieth, we will double up, so. That's all. I appreciate everyone coming out tonight. We're adjourned.
Much for that.